has launched the final community survey for its strategic action plan. In addition to the survey, we invite the public to attend the community summit to review the draft plan this coming Monday, May 19th, from 4:30 to 6:00 p.m. at the senior center. More information and links to the survey may be found at the city's website under projects. And the DDA will be hosting an open house for their Rotary Square Design Initiative that will take place this Thursday, May 15th, from 4:30 to 7:00 at Rotary Square. Thank you.
Announcements from the city clerk.
Yes, I've got meetings to announce for this week, the week of May 12th, 2025. The city commission will have a joint study session with the Grand Chevers County Board of Commissioners. That's this Wednesday, April 14th, at 9:00 a.m. in the commission chambers. The Downtown Development Authority Board will meet on Friday, May 16th, at 9:00 a.m. That'll be in the commission chambers. And then just a reminder, as I shared last week, that packets to run for the office of mayor or city commissioner are available for pickup in the city clerk's office. And then just my usual reminder to please speak in the microphone so folks can hear you, and that's all I've got.
Okay. Number three for announcements, we have recognition of the 2025 graduates of City Academy.
Yes, and I just want to thank Colleen Pavelio, the city's communications director, who is the director of City Academy. And I know she's got a lot to say as the director of that program, but I just wanted to acknowledge Colleen's fantastic work on building this program and helping to drive citizen engagement and community pride, and also thank the staff that participated in all the sessions, and turn it over to you.
All right, thank you so much. Can you hear—this is so tall. Is that better? Can you hear me? All right, okay, okay. Thank you, yes, good evening. My name is Colleen Pavelio. I manage communications for the city and also serve as the program director for City Academy. And tonight, we are here to recognize the 2025 graduating class of City Academy. Congratulations. Here they are on a lovely evening at DPS, learning all about big trucks and many other things. So when we built City Academy in 2023, we set out three main goals, and those were knowledge, community relations, and involvement. We wanted to inform residents on how the city operates, how services are structured, how they are funded, delivered, and all through a hands-on experience. Community relationships, we want to build an open line of communication between staff and these residents, and also want to create a space for mutual learning. And then lastly, involvement. We want to grow a pipeline of engaged citizens who are interested in serving on various boards and commissions and committees, and then also build ambassadors for this community. So we are in our third year, and I'm very proud to say that this program continues to meet and exceed those goals. Graduates of City Academy have gone on to serve on several boards and commissions. We've had graduates run for city commission. We have had graduates join advocacy groups that are currently collaborating with the city. And lastly, we can't help ourselves, we have roped many of them into serving as election inspectors for our elections. So, but very grateful to all of them. So while our program budget is modest, the return on investment, I believe, is truly priceless. Every participant walks away with greater knowledge of our city systems, and also from parks and public safety to water infrastructure and planning. My hope is that they leave empowered to act. So each person in this program, and I say this every time, took, you know, the time out of their busy lives to participate in this program, and that means that we all share one thing, and that is a true love for this city, because I share that love too. Their dedication shows, and I thank them. I want to thank all the staff as well who participated. Thank you to Benjamin, who allowed Kristen and Rebecca to participate and be my right-hand people for the academy. And it just really couldn't be a, be a successful program without all of those individuals participating. So the class of 25, we had a diverse cross-section of representation. We had the neighborhoods of Boom, Oak Park, Traverse Heights, Boardman—I had to change it—I had SoFo, but it's Fernwood now. Controversial, I hear, but—Central Neighborhood, Old Town and Slab Town. We did have a small cohort of individuals on Madison, but north and south of the park. So, you know, we tried to be a little more diverse there. So, so we felt like we had good representation from all of the neighborhoods. Tonight was our final session, so thank you to Gary Howe and Christine Minarvini, who participated this evening. They always are influential and serve as advocates and have served on boards and commissions, so I want to thank them as well, kind of outside of city staff who participated. I included some testimonials in your packet this evening because I wanted you to hear really directly from, from their mouths or handwritten word of what their journey meant to them. And I think when we built this program, there are a lot of professional development and networking programs throughout the community, but this is different than that. We wanted this to be a community-building program, and it's about civic understanding and human connection, and I believe that those testimonials really spoke to that. So throughout this program, we didn't just teach, we learned. I learned from all these individuals. And at the first session, we do this photo journey exercise, and I try to set a tone of respectful dialogue. And even when we disagree on different issues, maybe here at the city, it's because everyone here shares something powerful, and it's that love for the city. And it really sets a foundation to be, have respectful dialogue moving forward. And I think that that advocacy and working together on their future endeavors with the city will, will shape that way, too. So a quick rundown of the program. Session one, you'll see here, we had municipal government basics, and thank you to Liz and Benjamin for participating in that session. Session two is public safety, a true crowd favorite every time. Thank you to the fire department, the police department, as well as the QRT. Officer Culver, it was like a cue-the-dear moment. He showed up in the new electric motorcycle, which was a hit. We were all very confused because he pulled up and it wasn't making noise. He actually circled around us, and we were like, wow, what is that? But here is Heidi, you know, living out maybe her childhood dream, one of my childhood dreams, to shoot off a fire hose. So that is always a crowd favorite. And I kind of do that as the second session, as, as there's a reason for that. You know, I want everybody to get really hyped up, but I hope that every session beyond that kind of builds. So, and look at Mark Huggers' face. How can you not see that he was so excited to talk about wastewater here? But, so session three, we talk about water and waste. Thank you to Beta for providing a bus to us. There's a lot of times that these individuals haven't been on the Beta bus, so there is exposure there. Art and Mark give a great, and team actually, give great tours of the water and wastewater treatment plant. And then DPS, we have a great crew at DPS who really pull out all the stops for that evening. This is Chris. He is, I think, explaining how they, they're so creative over there that they actually came up with a custom design to pick up leaves. Did you know that? And so I think what Chris is saying here is that it scoops the leaves. And Kelly's face is pure as excitement and joy. Kelly? But anyway, it's a glimpse into like how, how great these programs are and how much connection there is. So thank you to the DPS team. Thank you to Brandy Ekren from Light &amp; Power, who's sharing their great milestones with us that evening, as well as Sarna from Seeds participated, and Megan Alexander from Carter's Compost. And we got to see the in-vessel composting unit in action, and we all got to throw our composting paper plates into the in-vessel composting unit. So it really became full circle that evening. Session five, we learned about planning, zoning, engineering, DDA, parking. We also did a Fish Pass tour, and it was all in the cold and rain, and they all came back for session six. So thank you to the team at DDA and Planning and Engineering, Zoning, Parking, and then also the Great Lakes Fisheries Commission for allowing us to tour Fish Pass. We went out to Hickory Hills. I, at any chance that I can get off-season, love to do engagement sessions at Hickory Hills. It's still surprising to me that a lot of people haven't been there before, and it's just this magical space. And at the end of that session, we plant two trees, and then we name the trees, and we—Matt Bright puts those names into the interactive tree map, so these individuals can watch those trees grow and check on them, submit an issue if they ever see an issue with the tree. But one of them was named after a sturgeon that the Great Lakes Fisheries Commission is following, that they've named Shaday, because this, this sturgeon is a smooth operator. So, so anyway, that's, that's Shaday up there. Session seven, thank you to Harry from the DDA and Heidi. That's really, you know, it's like the culmination of everything that you've learned, and we're going to talk finances now, what you're going to do tonight. But we talk about budget, revenues, expenditures, and also tax increment financing, and then they're able to do a mock budget exercise, and it always is fascinating what, what they're forced to cut. And it's, it's a tough exercise, but I, I hope it's fun. And we laugh while we do it. But yeah, and then tonight, again, we talked about appointed boards, and then we had Gary Howe and Christine Minarvini there to kind of talk about their experiences on boards and commissions. So a very full, robust agenda for eight sessions. And I, you know, I think they learned a lot, but again, I learned a lot from them, and, and we have fun while we do it. So I included a couple testimonials here. I will not read them, but they are in your packet. And again, thank you to the crew that provided those. And then with that said, I have certificates for each one of our participants, and then a basil plant. I always do basil because I'm Italian, but also, you know, this program is about laying a foundation, you know, planting a seed and letting it grow. So enjoy this with your next meal. So you'll come up and get your certificate, as well as grab a basil plant. So first we have, oh boy, we went over this. Okay, Marika Bavir. I know a Bavier. Okay, all right, Marika Bavir, congratulations. And we can clap, too, for Marika. All right, Kelly Busley. Congratulations, Kelly. Thank you. Thanks for being a part of the program. Kelly and her friend buddied up. I highly suggest that. When we were building this program, we had hoped that people would do the buddy system. So, you know, giving it a plug for 2026. Next, we have Jim Dagwell. Preferably, he's known as Dags in this group. Congratulations, Jim. Thank you. All right, and now we have Paul Dale. Congratulations, Paul. Thank you. Peggy, Peggy Garibaldi. Congratulations, Peggy. And also my neighbor, so we got to know one another. Okay, next we have Heidi Mello. Congratulations, Heidi. Jake Morse. All right, thank you, Jake. Congratulations. Laura Ness. Congratulations, Laura. Yes, right. Yeah, we may need a cap and gown set of them for next year. Anya Nyson. Congratulations, Anya. Thank you. Congratulations, Margaret. Another neighbor that I didn't know before. See, community building. Sam Shore. Congratulations, Sam. Thank you so much. Priscilla Wamsley. Thank you. And lastly, we have Ann Wilkins. Thank you so much. Okay, exciting. All right, do we have any questions about the program?
Yeah, can you go back to slide session seven?
Yes.
I was just wanting to point out the golden opportunity missed to put their hands up to look like they're holding that.
I know, right?
I was really confused when we first got to that slide. I said, huh?
And, you know, for those that don't know, the city has their own garage. We do not send out our vehicles to be fixed, and this is a snowplow truck up—I, I'm assuming it was getting fixed, but they may have just really been doing it up for this group. But anyway, it's, it's impressive, right? Yeah, next time, Mark, next time. Well, thank you. I want to thank administration for the support, and I want to thank city commission for the support. And again, I want to thank this crew. It's been an awesome journey to get to know one another, and we're going to do a little graduation party after this together, so thank you, everyone.
Colleen, I just wanted to say thank you and to all the staff. As you know, we do these in the evenings, and it's a lot of staff time after hours, and I really appreciate that extra effort. I know that's a, it's a busy few weeks for you, so thank you.
Okay, well, congratulations, you guys. And we're going to move on to the public hearing regarding the 2025-2026 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan and consideration of adopting the plan.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Wilson. Before I introduce our deputy planner, Leslie Sichterman, I did want to just make a brief mention—it's in your executive summary—however, allocations for the upcoming program year for Community Development Block Grant Fundy have not been announced by HUD at this time. The city commission may adopt the annual action plan reflecting an estimated allocation, and that's based on what we received last year. This is the recommendation from HUD, representatives in the Detroit Field Office, to recommend without having that allocation. As we know, things are changing in Congress and at the federal level, and so things can get held up there. The contingency language is on page 16. I'm just going to scroll down there real quick, just so you know what that is. And then I would defer to our clerk and city attorney, if there's any specific language that needs to go in the motion. One second here. So on page 16, "The City of Traverse City anticipates a total allocation of $365,324 in CDBG funding for the 25-26 program year. This is an estimate based on the program year of 24-25. As exact allocations have not been announced as the adoption date for this annual plan, all proposed activities budgets would be then proportionally increased or decreased from the estimated funding levels to match the actual allocation amounts." And so I would like to introduce Leslie, if she would like to come up and talk about the annual plan for this year. Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening. This is now starting to be a little bit of a routine for us. We're still operating under our five-year plan, which was adopted in August of '24, and this would be your annual plan, laying out the funding priorities for the 25-26 program year. This would be the second of two public hearings, and everything is the same dollar-wise and allocation-wise as what you saw at your first public hearing, with the exception of there is a little bit of a change, and that is $50,000 toward staffing time for homeless services. So the anticipation is that would be for our shelters, and if there's a need for some staffing again this year—we did some staffing last year for another program. We can have up to 20% of the full allocation in staffing time, and the rest is all either administration or actual, like, construction projects. So I think it's pretty self-explanatory, but would be happy to fill you in with all the many things I've learned about CDBG in the last year or so.
I was hoping to do the math in my head, but I can't. You said 20%, up to 20% of the total, and we're increasing it from the 50 to, what was it, 65? What was the extra that was added?
It was just added, so there was zero before.
Oh, so there was zero, so now it's the 50.
Correct.
And so we're not in danger of—if that number changes when—we're, because we're assuming it's going to be this, but it could be.
So the contingency language that we put in here is that if the allocation from HUD goes up or down, we would proportionally adjust. So we'll still meet all of our requirements, so we can't do more than 15% toward administrative costs, and we can't do more than—and I might have these switched, 20% toward administration and 15% toward any public service, which would be staffing.
Fair, thank you. Commission?
Thank you. Just a clarification, please. The Affordable Housing Assistance and Development references a new affordable housing project located at Front and Cass. Is that the Lot O project that stayed in Cass?
You know, this doesn't, this anticipates that, that this program would help to meet a funding gap that they have, but it's written openly and broadly enough so that if other opportunities came up, or some other, some other combination of projects, it could go toward those as well. But it's anticipated it would go toward that.
Okay, so, so there's no new affordable housing project at Front and Cass that is to come?
Not that I know of.
Okay, thank you.
And then as a procedural matter, Mayor Proton, we just need to have you open the public hearing.
The hearing is open.
And I'll just state that for anyone who wishes to speak, under this public hearing, please come to the podium. Right, seeing no one, you can close the public hearing.
We're closed. And are we?
And then there is a motion in the packet, which is that the 2025-2026 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan be adopted.
That sounds like a great motion that I just made.
I don't see that in my packet.
Yes, it's on the first page. It should be—yeah, it's on the first page.
Oh, way back there.
A motion made by Commissioner Treadwell, supported by Commissioner Anderson. Do we, public com—do we discussion, public comment?
We've already opened for public comment, so.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Two absent, four in favor.
Five in favor.
Not bad. Oh, yeah. Okay. I didn't realize I was voting.
You are?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'd just let you know that we will be sending this in, so the May 16th date on it will become the date of this year's plan. And so I will need some signatures and other information to send in by Friday.
Okay, moving on, looks like affirmation of the city commission's unanimous decision of May 5, 2025, to approve the special land use permit for year-round shelter at 517 Wellington Street, and approval of the May 5, 2025 meeting minutes, which is a housekeeping procedural matter to incorporate the order granting a special land use permit.
Sure, so the order granting wasn't in the packet last week, and I apologize for that, but as we discussed at the meeting last week, the entire record was in the packet, which came from the planning commission, which you were adopting, in addition to those conditions that we discussed at the public hearing last week. And so we just wanted to reaffirm that with the packet in the, with the order granting in the packet, and to also approve the minutes of that action at the same time.
Any questions by a commission or entertain a motion?
I'll move that the city commission's unanimous action of May 5, 2025, adopting the order granting special land use permit number 25-SLUP-01 for a year-round emergency shelter at 517 Wellington Street, as requested by Safe Harbor of Grand Chevers, Inc., and recommended by the city planning commission, be reaffirmed, and that the minutes of the May 5, 2025 meeting of the city commission be approved.
Agreed.
Motion made by Commissioner Treadwell, supported by Commissioner Shaw. Move to public comment.
And I will state the rules for public comment. Please come to the podium. Please state your name and address, indicate if you're willing. If you're a city resident, non-city resident, or a city business owner, we have a three-minute time allotment. When your time has elapsed, a timer will beep, and we ask that all language be respectful to everyone. Thank you.
My name is Justin Reed, 630 Cogge Drive, Apartment 1B, Traverse City, Michigan, state resident. I like to say that the, that the whole entire, you know, two-year, the year-round shelter is the right, right step. It's got a little more borough planning than the CCC did, because the CCC has the 2024 copyright on the website, it's still listed at Cass Road property, and that hasn't changed. So, but I thank you for all the work that has been done into bringing this to your project, especially on how there are examples of how a homeless program can help somebody from being homeless to being a part of this community, for finding housing to job and to just contribute. Thank you.
Anybody else seeing none? We'll bring it back to the commission. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? This time, four-four, two absent, not zero against.
Five-four.
Still five-four.
Five-zero.
You guys are going to help me get it together, thank you. Motion passes. Now we'll move to public comment.
And this is general public comment on any subject, even something not on the agenda.
Justin Reed, 630 Cogge Drive, Apartment 1B. The general comment that we make is, last Monday, it was talked about Eastern Avenue, and the subject was the Peninsula Drive sidewalk. I think with the Eastern Avenue project, as far as how it going up to that intersection, that way, there can be an end-to-end sidewalk, because I'm not going to say, hey, there's a sidewalk that goes up to Eastern, to the M37 intersection, and we can put a sidewalk on that one side from where it ends just north of Front Street up to Eastern Avenue. And I think that's the right step. And because that way, there would be no excuse, and even though that there's a petition out there for trying to make M37 safer over there, at the end of the day, it's still a M37, it's still a state highway, it's still within MDOT's right-of-way. And so the city can ask and suggest to MDOT about doing a sidewalk. But, you know, people have to be patient, because with the intersection of M37, M37 and Eastern, there'd be a crosswalk right there with the signal, and then there's a crosswalk for down on Front Street in Peninsula Drive with a crosswalk. So the argument that people are just going ahead, there's video of people just trying to walk, walk from one side to the other, and it's saying that these young people, they can't cultivate their minds. I still say that they should have, like, the moral compass of what's right, what's right and wrong, and also maybe take some more time and have a little patience to go down to the crosswalks. So thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? I believe there's an unwritten rule that if you want your civics paper signed, you're supposed to—just, just playing. All right, thanks, y'all. I believe here we are adjourning the special meeting, but stay tuned as we open up for our study session. Anything in particular other than?
Just that.
All right.
Would you like me to open up the study session, Mayor Proton?
Sure, thank you.
All right, thank you. So this evening, our study session is on the city's budgets, and the runoff show for this evening will be Traverse City Light &amp; Power. We'll give their presentation first. I would like to welcome Executive Director Brandy Ekren and Chief Financial Officer Carla Myers-Beeman for being here this evening. Following Traverse City Light &amp; Power, we'll hear from the CEO of the DDA, Harry Burkholder, and then we will hear from our city staff and do an overview of the city's budget for the fiscal year 25-26. So thank you, Brandy.
Hi, thank you for having me. So I also have Scott Menhart, TCOP, CTIO, to help answer any questions, more specifically the really difficult ones. But, you know, I'm always excited to, I think, come and talk with you every year, and really talk about really not only what we're spending money on, but really what we're doing. There's a number of slides. There's a number of slides in this presentation. I promised Ben that I was not going to spend three minutes on each one, holding this up for an hour or so. So I will fly through them, but I do want to leave some time for you to definitely ask some questions. There's a lot of material, and obviously, I know there's still some opportunity to ask follow-up questions to even after this. So we really do begin with our updated mission and vision statement. And this is actually our one-year anniversary of our new strategic plan. Actually, I'm looking forward to giving an update to my board tomorrow on how we're doing with that. And so we do lead with that with almost every single thing that we're doing. Our focus is our mission, so that we're mission-driven in terms of our investments, our activities. You know, the mission statement's been redone such that it's focused on the public value aspect of being a trusted community partner, moving forward with innovation and collaboration. And then we're working towards that vision. Our vision statement is focused with five years in mind, and the idea is focused on leading with positivity. We want to be able to enable our customers to help with their decision-making, with their energy and their telecom needs. But in essence, most of what we're focused on are these six priorities. I'll talk with them, talk about a little bit of them a little bit later in the presentation after Carla has an opportunity to go through some of the financials. The value statements are really centered around how we are planning. So much of what we put together for our budget, as well as how we're working on with our plan, is focused on ensuring that we're looking at sustainability. And so when we talk about sustainability, we're definitely talking about the environmental aspect, but also the social impact and the financial stability as well. So just kind of keep that in mind. I mentioned innovation and then definitely integrity. We work in a high-risk industry as it relates to safety, being able to ensure that we're meeting our public stewardship. So integrity is heavy in our values, and then clearly, collaboration. And I would be remiss if I didn't point out optimism and positive energy. That is really what we are about. The next two slides just really kind of touch on what we call as our numbers. They're the metrics. We have roughly 13,000 meters. That's what we say in the industry. Customers is another word for that. We've been in operation for 113 years. Last year, we peaked, and this is meaning it's like the highest amount that we peaked was about 70 megawatts. We're turning in about 49 employees. We got a lot of lines, even though they're kind of compressed within our city limits. TCOP fiber to the premise, not necessarily the broadband aspect, but we've been doing fiber to the premise for about five years now. I would still consider it in our startup phase because we're getting ready to roll out through the rest of the city. But we've got like three employees dedicated to that team right now. And then the 109 is the voice-over IPP. So instead of lumping in those services, that's really the phone service. So we do provide, obviously, the internet, but some people get the phone as well. You know my board. I always have an opportunity to show them off. And then I'm going to go ahead and turn the floor over to Carla, and Carla's going to go through much of our financials.
All right, we're going to start off with electric utility sales compared to purchased power. Our utility sales have a 1.5% low growth in 2526, and we have a power service cost recovery rate. So if our purchase power costs increase, so do our revenues, and if it declines, so do our revenues. So the increases revenues is attributed to an increase in expected purchase power costs in the upcoming year. If you look at the long term, we're kind of in an era of energy uncertainty. You've probably seen in the news that there's a lot of data centers coming, and they're unsure of how we're going to serve those data centers, especially when we're decommissioning our coal plants, such as our Camp Bell Coal Plant, which is going to be decommissioned at the end of the month, and we're not replacing that generation one-for-one. So that's kind of pushing power prices up. In the short term, when this was created, we had a harsher winter than expected. So we used a lot more natural gas out of storage. However, we have heard some good news that production is keeping up and replacing that natural gas in the storage along with the expected LNG exports production. So, so that's good news. So it may not end up as high as costs as projected in the budget. So it's just to give you some information on rates. This is from the Energy Information Administration, which is a federal agency, and this is 2023 data. So the average price for our customers is 11.48 cents, but the overall price for the state of Michigan is 13.76 cents. So with that increase of purchase power costs that I just mentioned, there is a possibility that our power supply costs could reach 8.2 cents. And then I broke down what our capital and operating costs, so what it costs to operate TSLP and reinvest into our infrastructure to make sure we have a reliable system for our ratepayers. With that increase, we would see an overall TCLP rate at 12.6 cents. So that's still lower than the average 2023 rate for the state of Michigan. We do have a lot going on with rates. However, we're not having what I call a base rate increase this year. We have a couple mandates from the state. One is the energy optimization surcharge. We're studying that from June to August 2025 and expect to present that to our board in September with a public hearing in October. And you'll hear more about this in the presentation. So the state passed a law, Public Act 229 of 2024, that mandates us to have 1.5% of energy savings. And we do that through providing a lot of rebates and incentives to our customers. The second surcharge will be implemented in October 1st, 2025. This is called the LEHEEP, and it'll be a charge of $1.25 per meter. This money will go to the state to help fund low-income programs to pay electric bills and natural gas bills and propane bills for those customers who are unable to pay their bill. We are looking to bring this program in-house the following fiscal year. That way, the money stays within our community. In December of 2025, we will begin our time-of-use transition with December consumption, and we plan to have the first time-of-use billing in January along with our energy optimization surcharge to help fund that program, which we'll touch upon in a few slides. Next, we'll look at TSLP fiber operating revenue. The first two sets of bar graphs are the lit fiber for residential and business, and the last is dark fiber. We're in the midst of expanding to Phase 2 right now. So the increase is a direct correlation of adding new customers on attributed to Phase 2. This just shows our projection of the fiber customer by fiscal year-end, 630, 2026 and 630, 2027. You see a big increase. Once again, that's directly related to the expansion of the city proper, of the fiber to the city proper. Sorry about that. Next, we'll dive in a little bit more on purchased power. To the left is solar energy. We just recently had a COD of the MPPA Calhoun Solar, the AES brand, which is kind of the darker gray that just started online in March of 2025. And the light gray is MPPA Whitetail Solar, and that will begin in September of 2025. With these two, we are happy to report we'll meet our 40% goal this fiscal year of 2025-26. So that's great news. And to the right is our wind energy, which is our Pegasus Wind and Stony Corners. I'm super happy to report this. Our sustainability analysts provided this information to me. So from 2018 to 19, we have reduced our emissions by 54.5% by investing in renewable energy. So I think that is just great news. This is our megawatt-hour comparison by project. So the dark blue is our thermal units. It's the market, what we buy off the market, bilateral contracts, our coal plants and our natural gas. And the green is our renewable energy, so that keeps growing, which is what we want to see. Just a few highlights, as I mentioned earlier. Camp Bell Coal Plant is decommissioned in May of 2025. Our Bell River Coal Plant is being converted to a natural gas peaker, which will significantly reduce the emissions. So Unit 1 is being converted in September of 2025, and Unit 2 is being converted in September of 2026, the following year. And then I already mentioned the two new solar projects coming online. Next, we'll look at our electric operating expenses. Brandy is going to touch upon these a little bit more in the back, but just to highlight a couple of things. You'll see customer accounting. The third gray bar, that's increased significantly. That's directly related to increasing our number of customer service personnel to enhance our customer experience with the expansion of Phase 2. Also, you'll see an increase of public service, which is directly related to our strategic priorities of environmental sustainability. And that's with the energy optimization program of 1.5% continues to increase those costs. This is the spending trends for TSLP fiber operating expenses. The dark and lit fiber is the main increase in 2425, and that's mainly related to the expansion of Phase 2, getting ready for it. The electric budget comparison. We have an increase in generation costs. That's directly related to initiatives to move forward our climate action plan. Those initiatives particularly related to decarbonization and technology solutions. And then once again, you'll see an increase in public service relating to the energy optimization program. Just to give you a little bit more details on Public Act 229, once again, as I mentioned, we are mandated to achieve 1.5% energy waste reduction savings. We are allowed to use efficient electrification measures towards the savings, so that will help. And then we are mandated to offer low-income programs accounting for at least 25% of the total EO spending. But that mandate does not come until year 2029. This is just a more detailed budget of our energy optimization program, as it is a significant expense of our budget, probably next to our purchase power cost supplies. We, our staff will be presenting more detail on this program in the fall of 2025 to our board. Fiber budget comparison is relatively stable as the 2425 budget encompassed the expansion of Phase 2 also. The only increase really is depreciation expense as construction is expected to be completed for the backbone in the 2526 fiscal year. This is a slide showing our employee costs and our total position. We had a net increase of two employees this year. And I'll just draw you down to our estimated annual employer contributions in the bottom left. We continue to accelerate our MERS pension costs. So we're expected to reduce those costs in the years 2031, 2032, significantly just to the normal contribution. And I'm going to turn it over back to Brandy for a few slides.
So each year, we put together what I would consider an annual operating plan. That basically is pulling together what are our resources, the time, personnel, to accomplish strategic projects and goals. And like this past year, we had like 84, 85 that influenced the strategic plan. Looking into the next fiscal year, right now, I'm trying to whittle down. I think we've got like 100 or so, which is a lot. But this slide right here is just an example of how that works with our strategic plan. So there is a process that the staff, we work on in terms of vetting. All, obviously, 85 doesn't necessarily mean there's, you know, 85 for technology, 85 for employee excellence. There's multiple impacts here, but this is just an example. As a matter of fact, at the date that we put together this particular slide, it's already been kind of adjusting, just so that we can kind of, just level set in terms of what we're actually able to accomplish. But I did want to share that with you because as I move into the next few slides, I'm going to talk about our strategic priorities and just a few examples of some of the things that we're working on and how they're moving our strategic plan forward. There are also things that are being funded by our budget. So with our community enrichment, this one right here, this priority, just, I mean, I'm not going to read the slide to you, but in essence, this is what public power is all about. What distinguishes us from our investor-owned utilities is how we are having value back to the community that we're serving. So this is one of our strategic priorities. And one of the things that we've been talking about, not only as a board, but also as a staff, is how are we not only supporting those projects that are coming through our community investment fund, but are there other initiatives and efforts that we should be supporting as well? So those are some things that we're spending time to focus on and consider. We're obviously want to make certain that the customers know what we're doing, what is the value. And so putting our marketing efforts and our marketing hats on, not only with our time-of-use rates, but also with TCOP fiber and then our My Clean Choice program. I didn't mention that. I might mention that a little bit more in another slide. But our My Clean Choice program is really that wraparound program that's covering energy optimization, energy efficiency, customer education, all of those items that are influencing the choice around the kitchen table, as like our, our staff likes to say. That's what My Clean Choice is about. And then obviously, our volunteer. So we have increased the number of hours that employees can actually volunteer outside of work. We used to have, it used to be just eight hours a fiscal year. Now they're like, I think it's, we like increased that by like three. So again, we are still working on how to track that. But that is in essence what we're trying to do, is make sure we're focusing on that. The customer experience, the focus here is we are adding, actually, we promote it within, some staff that was at the customer service level. We moved them up. We are, we'll be adding in a business customer specialist at some point. We're looking at a customers' cares program. And the customer care program, Carla mentioned that a little bit in terms of the low-income program that we are required to meet the needs of. The customer cares program is really that, I don't want to use the word missing middle, but it really is. They're not exactly low-income, but they need a little bit of help. They don't need help all year round, but maybe a couple of times. So that's something that the staff is putting together and really working towards so that we really have an all-around sort of service level, and we're not really skipping the beat. And then we are working on a customer service gap study. So we did kick off a customer lengthy, very lengthy customer service survey. That is lengthy, but we only do this a couple of times every, every few years. And that survey is going to lead into our gap assessment. Even though we are thanking customers for spending the time to go through that survey and have those questions, we are focusing on balancing and getting a sense of where we are baseline with our strategic plan as well as the customer experience. Employee excellence, the leading piece here is continuing to focus on professional development, change management, how we're moving employees through change, and then being able to modernize our policies and our programs as it relates to our industry, energy and telecom. Operational excellence, operational financial excellence, actually. If you recall, this particular priority is really focusing on balancing both operational needs and financial needs. So one of the new additions to our staff will be a procurement administrator, making certain we're getting the best value for our buck and synergy in terms of streamlining, making certain we're very consistent with how we're doing our procurement, but clearly making certain that we're also maintaining those high benchmarks. TCOP has gotten a number of high awards as it relates to reliability, safety, best-in-class, basically. And we want to continue to keep that moving forward. We're also going to be looking into, and I would say, the discovery phase of more of an enterprise risk management approach. So obviously, we're doing planning when it comes to a framework for projects, but being able to do enterprise risk assessments around all operations. And that's something that we're focused on this upcoming fiscal year. The technology transition, just a couple highlights there. Clearly, innovative means that we're going to be cutting-edge. You know, we want to be ahead and not only meet expectations, but exceed expectations for our customers. So we are testing out and looking into like, how does AI factor into that? What are we getting from AI? There's an excellent opportunity with the city to really explore the biogas facility opportunities. So we're super excited about that. Leveraging our operational technologies, and operational technologies are things that deal with like how the AMI meters are communicating like with, and I'll let Scott fill in the details because if I miss something, he'll, I won't even look in case I miss something up. But basically, how is the smart grid working to communicate? So we talk a lot about automation with all of these investments. How are we having that work with our employees as well? Are they trained up? Are they understanding how they can monitor the network and things like that? And then if need be, we'll be prepared to add on some additional staff odd under contract just to make certain we're meeting our needs. All of those projects that I mentioned, you know, I mentioned like 100-plus. I mean, I want to say about 75 to 80% of those require some level of technological. I mean, I want to say about 75 to 80% of those require some level of technological influence. And so those are some things that we're kind of tracking as we move forward. And last, but definitely not least, is our environmental sustainability priority. You know, the really key pieces with that priority, we're focused on operationalizing the Climate Action Plan, TCLP being environmentally sustainable with its operation, and then the third is everything else in between. And so what you see here in terms of like what we're focused on is we're moving forward with our strategy with our renewable energy. Carla's going to touch a little bit about that on the Capital Improvement Plan. But we want to be certain to integrate customer programs, that community engagement, looking at our own footprint and our buildings, how efficient is it? We're going through the hurdles of electrifying our own building so that we can lead with some type of example, so they know like the bumps in the road and our customers understand that. And then, clearly, one of the other key pieces that we are promoting customer-owned generation. So we are unique, I would say. I mean, there are other utilities that are not necessarily promoting that. It works for us. And so having customers as our partners, we're actually calling them prosumers because they're not just consuming, but they're partners on this journey. So those are some things that we're heavily invested in as we move forward into the next fiscal year. The next slide, I'll turn back over to Carla, I know we're close. And Carla's going to talk a little bit more about the Capital Improvement Plan, which I know you have a very lengthy report on that, but she'll touch on some highlights.
I'd just like to show the Electric Fund past 10 fiscal years. We've invested a lot, and I think that's directly attributable to our reliable system. We continue to invest, as you can see, in 2531. Our large expenditure in 2526 is obviously Phase Two of the Smart Grid and TCLP Fiber. And then, in 2829, we're planning a renewable energy and battery storage demonstration with the hopes of having that funded by a federal state grant. So this slide lists all our capital improvement projects by our strategic plan initiatives. I have to say, I'm kind of prejudiced. I'm excited about our rate analysis calculator. This will allow our customers to go online and change their behavior. If they wanted to add an EV charger to their, to their house, how would that impact their electric bill? If they wanted to move their dishwasher and run it at nighttime, how will that impact their electric bill? So we're really excited with that. We just applied for a grant, too, for the Hall Street Renewable Demonstration Investment, which would be smaller-scale solar located at our Hall Street substation, just to name a few. I think we've talked about the Smart Grid, TCLP Fiber. Here's the timeline. In April, they started engineering fielding, and right now, they're doing engineering design review and permitting, and then moving into Fiber Core Network. Construction start in May and June. In the late October, construction is expected to complete. And then Scott's here to answer any details on that. So thank you for your time and be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Fiber buildout. Did I just see something that said construction was going to be complete this October? Late October 2025? And what does that mean in terms of service to ratepayers?
I'd hate to misspeak.
We're getting lots of calls and letters. I'm sure you are, too.
Good evening. Yes, the construction of the Core Network, which will embody the rest of Traverse City proper, will be completed in October, end of October, 2025. What that means is that the citizens and businesses that don't currently have service will be eligible for service, and we can actually start hooking them up. So we encourage everybody to, we'll be posting online schedules of our construction progress, and then they can actually sign up, and we can start actually getting them connected to the system.
Is this going to be a rolling start, so as you complete sectors? That those will become open for enrollments?
That's correct. Yep. So we're actually starting in May, coming up in the next week or so, and we're actually looking at two areas of the city where we'll start. And once those are completed, we'll actually allow subscribers to start hooking up at that point. And then, we'll continue moving forward into other areas while we construct. And then, we finish those, we'll allow people to sign up in those areas. So it'll be rolling throughout October.
And based on the experience that you've had in Phase One, what's the approximate timing from the open-to-buy to the actual service to the premises?
That's a great question. When we did Phase One in 1.1, we didn't have the pent-up demand that we have now. And so there's been quite a few years where we've got a bunch of prescribers, as we call them. And so we'll, we'll try to tackle those first, as those early subscribers, we have all that data. And so historically, we looked at one to three days from the moment that they called to hook up. That might be a little bit delayed based on, you know, how deep that is and how many contractors we can bring in during the time to help that, so.
That's great news. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Tredwell?
Yes, two unrelated questions, but first, already this year, we have seen rather unprecedented weather-related strains to the Michigan grid. Fortunately, Traverse City Line Power was minimally affected, but if we look at the biggest thing, the ice storm six weeks ago, that was of a scale that if we didn't have as many mutual aid agreements in place as we do, it would have bankrupted Presque Isle Electric and Gas just because of the scale of the disaster. Are we anticipating that because that required so much resources from the broader Michigan electric community that it will incur costs down the road to grid infrastructure? Or has state and potential federal funding looking to backfill those expenses? Yeah.
So I, one, I'm glad you mentioned it because it's an excellent opportunity to really be grateful that we did not experience any outages. We did not experience that same impact. And I'd like to say we're just probably blessed regardless of where you are on the spectrum of spirituality, having gone through an ice storm when I lived downstate, but...
Yeah, January of 2014, right?
Yeah, yeah. Thanks for reminding me.
I was there.
But it definitely, I think, so for TCLP, we were in the process of giving aid. So we were able to provide three crews. We also loaned out our tree trimming crew. And so in that particular situation, we have invoices out to make certain that we are getting paid. We, FEMA is involved, as Carla kind of clarifies. Us getting reimbursed may not be as fast as the 30 days that we normally get when we're issuing mutual aid. So I do not envision us giving mutual aid to result on a burden on the TCLP rate base. So costs associated with that. Now, I will tell you, what we do put into our system, you know, Carla went through like what we've been investing in in the past 10 years or so, it is for things like this. It is the best thing that we can do, vegetation management, smart vegetation management, investing in our smart grid, investing in our system. Those are the resilient activities that we do as far as our Capital Improvement Plan to help minimize those type of things when they happen. I don't want to say if, but when they happen.
Thank you. And my second question, I am very appreciative that we are continuing on our carbon neutral by 2040 goals and working to transition to a higher share of our energy portfolio being renewable sources, but, and encouraging energy efficiency at the consumer level and other tactics. But we are looking at potential rollbacks of regulations at the federal level and a reversal of clean energy subsidies that could end up trying to keep, say, a coal plant that's scheduled to be decommissioned to still be running. I expect it will still be decommissioned. It just might have another two years of life.
Yeah.
But do you think that those changes will make it harder?
Harder? It's hard to say whether or not it would be harder. You know, so one thing to keep in mind, our goals have been in place before those dollars were ever available. And when we move forward with our planning, we're always planning for if we do get some additional support, that would be great, but we're planning and investing with the idea that those additional funding dollars will not be there. Our goals as it relates to, you know, sources, clean energy generation sources, so our goal is 100% renewable right now by or before 2040. Now, what we're looking to update our goal is, is updated with an emission-driven goal so that the resources can also include battery storage and technology, things that we talked about in our Climate Action Plan. Those are the types of things that we're looking towards to make certain that the lights stay on when the sun's not shining, the wind's not blowing, and then we can plan a little bit. So those efforts will not be impacted in terms of what's going on with, I would say, at the federal level, the amount of funding and perhaps any permitting. Those are some items that have been challenges even before the federal administrative changes. So a quick answer to your question, I do not envision that impacting our goals as we move forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? Okay, here are none. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protemuslin. I would like to introduce the CEO of the DDA, Harry Burkholder.
There we go. Sorry about that. Thank you, Benjamin. Good evening. Harry Burkholder, Executive Director with the Downtown Development Authority. I want to echo Brandy's comments that we're thrilled to be here to talk about what the DDA has been doing over its plan for the next fiscal year. I also want to thank Heidi and her staff, Liz and all the department heads because what you see in this budget is very much reflective of projects that are also being worked on by the city. As a component unit of government with the city, we often have joint projects, and I want to thank them for their help in putting this budget together. I also want to let everyone know that this will be the first year heading into this fiscal year that will be under the city's BSNA program, which will allow us to better track all of our projects in tandem with the city. So thank you again, Heidi, for that. Most of you are aware of our Board of Directors. We recently took action, or you recently took action, to reduce the number of board members from 12 to nine. I think one of you might be sitting on a subcommittee right now looking at DDA board members, but everyone is familiar with this list of faces, including the mayor. We often get asked, how do we develop our budget? And much like Brandy, we look at our mission, which is not stated on the slide, but is in your packet, as well as the city's Capital Improvement Program, which we have specific projects, again, tied to the DDA and the city. As you can see in our list of projects, we have a series of ongoing financial obligations and projects and services that we've done for many years, and we maintain those obligations moving forward. We've been really paying attention to the Strategic Action Plan that the city is developing, including the draft pillars, and I know those are evolving, but we take into consideration that involvement and where those are headed. And I think some of the projects that we're working on are very reflective of what we're starting to see as part of that action plan. Obviously, we're guided by, just like the city, some of the existing planning documents, whether it's the master plan, some of the plans that we've been working on and we've been working on since before the pandemic, like the Lower Boardman Otway Riverwalk Plan, the Mobility Action Plan, and some of the other policies help guide the decisions that we make in terms of our budget. Over the last six or seven months, the DDA has really taken some time to think about and prioritize some of the capital improvement and service priorities of the DDA, cognizant of the time remaining on TIFF 97. Obviously, we're working to extend that TIFF program, but we are working with the current reality that it's set to expire in 1997. So we are operating, and you see it's reflective in our budget, that assumption for the remaining couple of years of TIFF 97. And then, we have our Moving Downtown Forward Guiding Principles, which I won't read, but those were developed over the last three years as part of our Moving Downtown Forward planning process. Again, also very similar to some of the guiding principles in the Strategic Action Plan and also of the city. I like to show this slide only because not many people have seen it, but it's a kind of a good description of what the DDA does. On our website, we actually have another panel that says what the DDA doesn't do. I did not include that here, but this goes to show what our core mission is. And then, I want to reiterate the collaboration with not only the municipal partner of Traverse City, but also with community partners. The project that you see on the slide, I was told it's going to be done on Thursday or Friday, and that's a great example of a joint project between the city and the DDA, the Hannah Park Overlook. That project was funded and supported equally 50/50 by the city and the DDA. The DDA has three budgets, and then we oversee on behalf of the city the Arts Commission budget. So we have a general budget, and then we have the TIFF 97 budget and the Old Town TIFF budget. On that map, you'll see the districts of TIFF 97 and Old Town. So the budget dollars that are allocated for each of those TIFFs can only be spent within those two districts represented here in green and in yellow. In terms of our general fund revenue, when the DDA was created, we have two mills that are levied on all property owners within the downtown district. We also have a TIFF administration fee. There's a portion of the fees collected from TIFF goes to the general revenue, and that essentially funds the DDA office and staff. We have a contract with the DTCA, which is a merchants' association that helps pay for one of our employees to essentially help organize the marketing and events for downtown. And then, this year, we have three grants that we're working on. One grant has been secured, and that is in partnership with actually a subrecipient of a NOAA grant that went to the Grand Travers Band for about $657,000. And that is for shoreline stabilization or essentially evaluating the opportunity for shoreline stabilization with the entire Lower Boardman River corridor, that 1.6 miles. That's part of a three-year grant. We are working with NOAA. We have been told that the third year of NOAA grant funding is still secure, and that would actually then come in the form of over a million dollars worth of implementation to what we study as part of this first year of the grant. We have the Eagle Grant, which we've had for quite some time, and we've talked about at the city commission level for the cleanup of the West End properties. That grant expires in August of 2026, so we still have time for that. It's included in this budget in case there is movement on that end of downtown and the city commission chooses to move forward. We also continue our work with Rotary Charities on Rotary Square. Part of the $1 million appropriation from Rotary Charities as part of this project has not been spent. And so we are looking at combining the remaining funds of that overall grant with some TIFF funds to maybe take the first step in some of the reconstruction efforts associated with Rotary Square. One thing we really tried to do this year is kind of better articulate the buckets from which the TIFF dollars are spent. And so we categorize these, and you can see this in your packet under kind of the multicolored Excel spreadsheet. What does it cost to run downtown, essentially? What does it cost to administer the Downtown Development Authority? What does it cost to build and maintain downtown? Specifically, looking at the essential public infrastructure and services that kind of happen on a year-to-year basis, things we don't want to go without because they're important to, again, building and maintaining downtown. Then, we have a bucket we've called Transforming Downtown, and those are kind of the big projects that's been the focus of a lot of the DDA discussion over the last year. And those are some big-ticket items that really look at those public spaces and infrastructure that kind of create the landmarks within downtown and the community. And again, those things, those projects have been discussed in different formats for the last couple of years. And then, we have Activating Downtown and Growing Businesses, and that really speaks to the programming that happens downtown through our events and through some of our promotional activities. Again, the DDA is really the only entity within the city that does programming within the city. the city. We have roughly 15 events that are all open to the community, along with a number of promotional events for downtown. I'm not going to read each of the dollar amounts associated with these items under each of the categories, but we do have, again, a DDA administration fee, so a portion of each TIF, about 3.5% of the total taxable value, is then allocated to the general fund to help run the operation. We have, this is the second year, excuse me, of the service agreement with the city. Again, it's a portion of the TIF funds that have been paid to the city to support the services that the city provides within the downtown district. So everything from tree planting to street sweeping to moving the planters. The contract for the downtown police officer is included in this, as well as the trash removal. So this is, again, that agreement that the DDA and the city agreed to a couple of years ago to pay for those services. We have legal services, and then we have some miscellaneous costs and the utilities. When we talk about the shared expenses between both the TIF 97 budget and the Old Town TIF budget, we talk about those essential public infrastructure projects. We talk about streetscaping and snowmelt. So this is something, this is actually a policy that was created by the DDA and is currently being updated as we speak, and we have contributed 50% of streetscaping and snowmelt costs for the redevelopment of parcels downtown for many, many years. When coming up with this number, we had looked at what the investment in streetscaping and snowmelt has been for specific projects over the last five years. And so the numbers that you see here are significantly lower than this budget allocation in previous budgets, understanding that we're still going to see some redevelopment happening over the year within both districts. Stormwater infrastructure was something that we added last year as part of our conversation with the city commission about our budget. The TIF 97 allocation for this year is really devoted to the overall reconstruction of Lot B. So Lot B is going to be redone this year, which is in the city budget. A portion of that reconstruction includes stormwater infrastructure, and so this is a contribution to that overall stormwater infrastructure cost. We also have a general infrastructure repair line item to kind of address on an expedited basis all the small little improvements that we can do within the city. So instead of doing a whole block or repaving a whole block or replacing broken curb on a whole block, maybe we can take kind of a precision cut on some of those curb cuts or mid-block crosswalks or street improvements. And so we are actively working with the city engineering department to, we've identified, we did a walking tour of all downtown. We've identified a list of some of these small infrastructure projects and are working with the city engineering department to do a bid or to let a bid here in June to actually finish some of those small infrastructure projects. The city infrastructure contribution is a new item for this budget, and inevitably we get asked by the city to contribute to one or two kind of unforeseen public infrastructure projects throughout the year. And so this is our attempt to essentially set aside that bucket for those asks. This year, when we talk about, and I'll talk about this in a second, the North Union Street Bridge Repair, is it a great example of that project? And we've outlined that specifically within this budget, but in future years, we anticipate that that would fall under this kind of general infrastructure contribution. So that number will probably be higher in future years. We look at the TIF 97 budget, the essential public infrastructure, when we talk about building and maintaining downtown. We have the party, the Hardy Parking Deck Bond Payment, which expires again with the termination of TIF 97. Those costs are fixed, and those are set by the city. I did mention, again, the North Union Street Bridge Repair. My understanding is that project is, I have my notes right in front of me, close to $600,000 potentially, or $700,000. And again, the city has asked the DDA to contribute funds towards that, and that is the amount that the DDA board has determined could go towards that project. In addition to the North Union Street Deck and Stair Replacement, as part of the Enovo Development several years ago, the public infrastructure component of that project was the staircase. At the time, we were still working on the Lower Boardman Otto Way Riverwalk Plan and had talked about having a uniform approach to the look and feel and materials of all the boardwalk infrastructure downtown. So a temporary deck and stairs were essentially placed at that location. It's been close to three and a half years. It's time to replace those deck, that deck and those stairs. We do have a pretty consistent aesthetic, materials and theme for the Riverwalk that are very similar to what you see in the Boardman Lake Loop, so we hope to do that for this project as part of kind of outstanding to-do in that district. The other items that I mentioned, the shared TIF expenses for those essential public services are listed on that sheet in orange, but it's all the things that essentially go to making downtown kind of work for what you see it today. Again, the police officer and the trash removal, even though it's a service, essential of public service, that's actually under the auspices of the shared service agreement. But the wayfinding signage, the cleaning green team that we use every summer, the holiday lights, landscaping, all of those items fit underneath this heading, as well as the administration for the farmer's market and our public restroom program, which is only funded under the TIF 97 program because those assets are only in TIF 97. New this year under the landscaping is a more considered effort to do things at Rotary Square. We are, if you've been by there, it's in dire need of some seeds and some grass, so we're working on that actively. And then we are working with the city to do a whole new planting system for the J. Smith Walkway. It just, it's been a while since there's been attention paid to the J. Smith Walkway, so we are working with the city to do that, still this spring. In terms of the transformational projects, again, these really come from the discussion at the DDA for the last several months about what are our priorities and what we want to focus on, again, understanding the potential short life left in TIF. We've been talking about Rotary Square for some time. We're in the middle of our conceptual design process. The city manager mentioned on Thursday, we have an open house to look at three potential visions for the Rotary Square, and we hope to refine those, again, still later this spring and into the summer, and have an idea or a vision of what that square would look like. The Farmer's Market Pavilion is by far the largest expenditure we've identified in this budget. This is a project that was actually listed in the original TIF 97 plan and was kind of on the precipice of moving forward back in 2017, 18, and was paused essentially when the idea of the Civic Square came to the forefront, and there was discussion, does the farmer's market fit in the Civic Square space? I think we've determined that it does fit on a temporary basis, but not for a permanent basis. So we are moving, the DDA board is proposing to move forward on the implementation of a pavilion in tandem with the reconstruction of Lot B. That's one of the reasons why it's in this year's budget. Again, the city's moving forward with Lot B, whether there's a Farmer's Market Pavilion on it or not. It just seemed like it was a great time to actually maybe do three projects at once. So the first step in that is to reconfigure the design, the preliminary design that was developed in 2018, and then actually fund the pavilion itself potentially in the spring of next year. The Boardman Otto Way Riverwalk is, a planning process is underway. We are moved forward with Informed Studio on the schematic design process, again, working from the original unified plan concept and then the conceptual design concept that was developed. This is the next phase in that development, and we hope to have a better idea of the potential costs and final design of the Riverwalk given by December. The two-way pilot project is something that we've talked about at the city commission level for quite some time, and it was agreed that this would be extended until December of this year. So we do have continued funding to continue to do the evaluations and the data collection as part of that, as well as looking at ways that we can make potential modifications, either at the signals along State Street or in pedestrian modifications at the intersection of Pine and Front. As part of that larger discussion on State Street, we've also been talking about pedestrian access in the form of mid-block crosswalks. The city engineering department has looked at the cost for at least two crosswalks on the 100 and 200 block mimicking what you see on Front Street. They're not cheap, so we're looking at potentially implementing at least one this coming year, probably on the 100 block of State Street, but that will be a conversation that we continue to have with the city engineering department, but that's reflected in this budget. And then we have the West End demolition allocation for $80,000. This is something that's actually in the city budget under the parking services. If we do not move forward with the Eagle Grant, there has been discussion about maybe the city would demolish the two buildings on State Street that are closest to the Union intersection. And so actually, the parking services budget reflects that cost, which is $300,000. The DDA has been asked to contribute to that project as well, and that's where the $80,000 comes from. So the $80,000 would contribute to the demolition of those two buildings. That said, if the Eagle Grant was used, then we wouldn't have to use those dollars. I would say also with the Rotary Square, Farmer's Market Pavilion, and the Riverwalk, we're at a very kind of important point in each three of those projects. So the DDA has recognized we only have so much time left in TIF 97, we only have so many dollars, and so we really need to do these next stages of schematic design and cost estimation to figure out exactly what we can fund or the extent of what we can fund. So each three of those projects has kind of a point in time where we have a cost, and the DDA board, along with the city commission, will make a decision on do we want to move forward with those projects. So we're, again, at a critical moment for each of those three large projects. Terms of the other transformational public infrastructure projects, this is in Old Town. We have been working with the Fish Commission in the city for quite some time on the replacement of the Rivers Edge Riverwalk, that section that's connected to the Fish Pass Project. They actually have a small dollar amount budgeted for the replacement of that boardwalk. The DDA is asking that we, again, use some of the same materials that are used on the Boardman Lake Loop to create that kind of consistency in the aesthetic and the materials along this section and actually add a railing. And so we are allocating $250,000 for that project this year. I don't know if it's going to be actually finished in this fiscal year. That's a running conversation that we're having with the Fish Commission. The other item that we've talked about quite some time is actually signage for the Riverwalk. So if you go anywhere near the access, whether it's stairs down the river, there's not one sign that says that this is, there's a Riverwalk in the downtown. So we have had conversations with the city's Parks and Recreation Department about developing a signage plan for the Riverwalk, and then potentially at least this fiscal year in the Old Town District is at least erecting one or two of those signs, again, after we do the design with the Parks and Recreation Commission. Some of the shared transformational public services that we have between both TIF districts is our downtown composting program. We have roughly six different restaurants that we're working with right now to help them reduce their organic waste, and we are hoping to expand that again this coming year. As of recently, as a couple of months ago, we diverted waste totals of over 2,364 pounds of food scraps that would normally go to the landfill. So that is a small program, but growing, and we hope to continue to do that. We also have dollars that we've allocated for non-motorized investments, and what those include is something that's going to be a running conversation with the city. We know that with the new trail along the bay, there has been talk about at least some better visual transition between that trail and the downtown, and we believe that's something we could tackle under this, but that's, again, a conversation that we're having with the city about where those dollars could be allocated. We do have money in our budget right now for one more year of rent on our retail incubator space, but we are actively working with our landlord about ways to find another tenant for that space. And actually, this Friday at our board meeting, I think we're going to have a proposal for the DDA board to consider as a way to actually have that happen. So until that agreement is finalized, it's going to be in this budget, but we're hoping to not have it as part of the next fiscal year. Then the last item is the, all of the funds that go towards Activating Downtown and Growing Businesses. So money for these activities include working with Greenlight Marketing to help us kind of do the design and the aesthetic of all of our promotional activities, actually funding the promotion itself, and then the events. And then we have a contract with, proposal contract with Traverse Connect, which is substantially lower than it was last year, and I know that you all just approved a contract with them as well, but that's really what that's kind of bucket of funds is dedicated for. Lastly, I'll just talk about the Arts Commission budget. I know this is something that was talked just recently, and I'm happy to say that the budget looks like it's going to be doubled, which is fantastic. The big project that the Arts Commission has been working on over the last year and is looking towards the fall is a mural festival on the A Street corridor. We have six murals that are going to be going up in the fall, and that's part of a larger art project along that whole corridor that would include other installations besides just murals. We also are talking about ways that the Arts Commission could be involved in the kind of traffic improvements on West Front, just annual maintenance that we do on our public art, and then we have a Paint It Forward grant where we often, we award dollars for art organizations within the city that actually do art within the city, so we have money allocated for that. And then everybody remembers the kind of deermen that were knocked down last year. We need to replace those for art pieces, and that's also part of this budget. That is the end of my slides. I'm happy to take any questions.
Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So my first question is, are you spending enough to maintain downtown? And the reason that I came to this question is because as a homeowner, general wisdom is that you're supposed to budget 4% of the value of your home every year for maintenance and repairs. And if you look at the assessed value of the downtown properties, that's $118 million. Okay, we've only got tax capture of $3 million. 4% of that would be $124,000 a year just to, just to maintain and repair. And you're spending this year with the new item, line item, your $65,000 plus that you're shared, what you give to the city to share repairs. It's pretty close to that, but I see so much deterioration downtown. I see crumbled sidewalks, you know, the corners are all missing, crumbled crosswalks. The whole Merchi Bridge area is just dirty and deteriorated. There's that sheet metal that's sticking out on the West Front Bridge. I mean, what is that? The State Street property that I know, you know, want to take those buildings down, but it looks awful over there, just terrible. We could have more picnic tables everywhere, more trash everywhere. In your, in your statement at the top of your document, you, you know, you call yourselves the caretakers of downtown and that your mission is to prevent deterioration, but, you know, the really big dollars in your budget are going to big shiny new things like the Farmer's Market Pavilion, and this concerns me because it seems shortsighted to add big new infrastructure projects when you, when what you've already got needs so much attention. And I would like to see more attention and money going to, towards caretaking and your mission to prevent the deterioration in downtown. Now, you don't have to answer any of this right now, it's just a thought. My second question is about stormwater management. I was looking for the Ottawa, Ottawa Boardman Plan, couldn't find it, but I found this amazing document called TIF 97 Stormwater Management Plan from 2018. Fascinating, great document. So that's seven years ago, and it said that nearly the entire TIF district was, well, first of all, it says nearly the entire TIF district discharges stormwater right into the board. And it says, I quote, "From an economic standpoint, higher buildings, roads, parking lot density can be beneficial to a city, but this lack of open space in the downtown," that's in brackets, "can make stormwater management challenging." Yes, 2/3 of the entire downtown, it says, is impervious, and that's seven years ago. It's got to be even greater than that. So where is the fund in your budget to make recommendations, you know, or to implement recommendations from this document? There's all kinds of just great stuff in there, small things that you could do, really big things too, like putting green roofs in. big things too, like putting green roofs in. Does the new TCLP building on Hastings have a green roof? I don't think it does, does it? Okay, so again, that's just my, I'd really, I mean, it's a really, really good report with all sorts of great small things that can be done, and I don't, I don't see them anywhere. Finally, I'd love to see the Boardman, Ottawa River Rock Phase 1, what that means. I don't have that document, maybe it's stuck way back in my planning commission stuff somewhere, but it's not, I don't find it on your website. And the, one more ques, just, this is a question you can answer, that coastal rehab grant from NOAA and the ban for 600, what is that going to be used for? Is that part of the whole Farmers Market?
I mean, it's tied, it's tied to the, it's tied to that project, but it's standalone. Essentially, it's to evaluate what are the current conditions along the river corridor in terms of like a shoreline restoration perspective, identify what the current condition is, and then identify what are those, some of those potential things you could do along that river corridor to better protect it, but also take away some of the hardening or softening of the shoreline, using kind of natural green infrastructure. That's what this section of the grant is supposed to do. Once that's been identified and some of those improvements are listed, the third year of funding then would provide the funding to do some of those implementation activities. So it's very much tied to the Riverwalk project that we're talking about around that kind of first phase, and that's part of the discussion we've had with that consultant and how do we kind of bake in some of these improvements as part of that project.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Any other questions from Commission? Comments? Commissioner Anderson?
Harry, I know you and I have exchanged emails on this, but I did, I did want to express some continuing concern about the additional staff person that's recommended within your administrative budget, and I know we're scrutinizing all additions to staff, permanent staff, very carefully, and I just wanted to be sure that that was integrated with the rest of the, of the staffing proposals for the entire city. And so thank you for the information that you provided, and I'm probably going to continue to be asking for, for further justification on that one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time, Harry. Well, it looks like we're at the end of the, or...
Yep, we're at our last budget presentation, and I'd like to introduce our Finance Director and Treasurer, Heidi Sheppi, and it looks like they're just going to get her presentation rolled up. Okay, so everybody, I've seen a lot of questions come through, so hopefully everyone has had a chance to look at the 300 and some page document. It does look a little different this year. We did utilize ClearGov, the module to hopefully make it a little easier. We have gotten some feedback already as far as the images, so apologize for some of the images may be a little blurry. We're working with, with the developer to see if we can't figure out how to get those a little cleaner for you, either in this one or definitely going forward. Also, we are utilizing the, a couple of the modules this, this budget cycle, so if you go out to the website, you'll see a link to the, the document, but then also we have the transparency module, which hopefully gives a little bit more dive into the details and allows you, has a little bit more. Colleen has been kind of spearheading that part of it and getting it out there, being the communications. So we're doing these in baby steps and stages, and hopefully we'll grow that and evolve it as we continue to use additional modules as we go. First thing is the strategic plan. One thing in the standardized budget, the Government Finance Officers Association is one of the awards that I am actively looking to make, have our budget adhere to, and with that, the strategic plan and goals of the Commission is one of the criteria. So the strategic plan that you, the City Commission is working on, I'm anxiously waiting and hoping and wanting to get that incorporated because we can't get that award without it. So everyone has probably been part of that process, but we have the, the six key pillars. We've been closely monitoring this process in, in Treasury, and once that comes through, we have in ClearGov the ability to, any capital project, project requests, we will establish those, and every, every request will say which of these pillars and which tiers that it adheres to, and that'll be part of the process and the program. So hoping, once we get those, we can get it incorporated and going forward, and then maybe we can get a budget award. New position requests, so we did have a lot of position requests, 18 in total. Those are identified on this slide here. The stormwater specialists, there are two positions requested. Fire EMS, there were six positions requested. Just want to highlight, those are being paid for by the millage that was approved by the, the public. And then the Marina Dock Master is moving from seasonal to full-time, and the water treatment plant operator is requesting to move from seasonal to full-time. So those are not full entire new positions, just the transition. So the recommended positions, so we, part of the budget process is we meet individually with each department head, we go through their budget, they make their request, and then we have the ability to kind of sit back, summarize all of the, all of the positions, and then Liz does the one-on-one, and between Liz and Christine, make the recommendations. And so the recommendations, the recommended positions that we have on this slide, the, the amounts are built into the budget, into the payroll and the benefits. So if, if these positions are approved, this is reflective of the numbers that you see in the budget that you have. So system administrator, I mean, not going through all of them, but the two, water treatment plant operator and Marina Dock Master, even though they're two positions, they are just transitioning from seasonal to part-time, so when you look at the budget, it's not such a significant increase. And then the Fire EMS, that is in the new 210 Fire EMS fund. Some of the feedback we had gotten from some of the questions over the weekend, so I just slid this slide in, hoping to clarify. So the organization chart, it looks a little different this year, so as part of ongoing succession planning, there are some changes in terms of one department will have a little less money in, built into the operational budget because somebody's potentially retiring, and then so we're transitioning. So there's more to come on that. Parks and Rec has been separated from DPS into its own department. As, as you're aware, we have IT, that has been separated into its fund, and that has been moved out of the general fund. And then communication activity has been broken out from the Clerk's Office, so that's its own fund. So those are kind of those changes that you see in the organizational chart, and those were intentional and not errors on, on our part. All right, 25, union negotiated, so also built into the wages and benefits into the budget is a proposed, budget includes the union ratified contracts, so those are in, in the union contracts, there was no negotiation, that's what's included in there. The only exception is police and patrol, their contract ends 2026, so theirs is the only difference in that 5%. The fire contract ends June 30th, and that's under negotiation still, so we don't have that number as of yet. And city managers recommending 5% consistent with the other unified, ratified contracts for ACT management. So use of funds, this is a little different this year because of moving the fire out of the general fund. So obviously, personnel is the highest percentage of our budget in, across the general fund. Last year, the personnel was 60%, 62%, I believe, of the general fund. This year, it was 50, and why would a significant drop? Because we moved fire out into its separate fund. So we had fire in 101, 336, has, all of that activity has moved out, and that has a little over $3 million in their budget alone. So I kind of wanted just to show, in comparative to that 63%, it's not really a drop in 50%, which, especially with the new position increases. But the Fire EMS, that personnel as a percentage of total is 72% of that entire budget. The only thing I would want to highlight there is we're, the personnel is budgeted, but we are anticipating additional operating expenses once they're fully, we have 12 months fully staffed, but it takes time to go out to post and get people in, they do their interviews, they do. So not, even though this is approved and built in for 12 months, there's not necessarily going to be 12 months of expenses that we have in the budget. Another thing that we've included in the use of funds, this Commission has approved to draw, utilize $300,000 to fund the MERS plan as required by the state of Michigan. I think we believe proved that back in April, so that is built into the budget. And again, we'll monitor that. These additional positions have approved are going to make that unfunded liability increase even more, so you may see a little bit jump in our requests next year, but we're always looking and always looking to analyze to see where that's going to come in. Fund balance policies, so this is one of the ones that I know is near and dear to quite a few Commissioners' hearts. Our goal is to only bring in what we need without having a significant fund balance. As, last year, we had a 40% fund balance, which is higher than the policy. The policy recommends between 15 and 20%. So we had last, at your budget meeting last, last week, you approved the intentional drawdown, and what we did is we kind of looked at the budget and said, okay, where do we think we're going to come in? Property tax revenue was one that we had restructured the way we were projecting it. I kind of took it the way that I did it over at the county in terms of, and having a new assessor, they, we just kind of put our heads together and figure out what's a better way because we were always coming in significantly lower or higher in revenue than what was projected. So we were under projecting our revenue, which then we're always adding to our fund balance. So hopefully, we did a great job this year, and we come right on, on task. But if, with the intentional use of that fund balance, we're hoping to draw the 40% down to the 32.7%. And then utilizing in this budget, we're going to draw it down to 29% if, if we spend everything as proposed in this budget cycle. So that kind of gives us, so the 3, 3.2 million is that potential to work with. So with that, the 25 million, 32% is $5 million, that's the, kind of where we're at, and our goal is that 3.2. So we have a little wiggle room, but if you have one, one big expenditure, I mean, that's not a ton of money when you're talking capital expenditures. So, and also with the new positions, we do want to kind of keep an eye on our unfunded balance, and we don't want to draw it down 100%. So we're trying to do it incrementally and responsibly so we can be, make sure we have the funds and kind of go as we, as we come through. Okay. New funds. As I mentioned, the two new things to call out, we have the new 636 Information Technologies Fund, that was in the general fund, a department for technology services, and that was a lot significantly smaller department than what you're going to see in the IT fund. That is now an internal service fund, and so we've kind of handled that, kind of like we do, they, they did over at the county, where all the expenditures are accounted for in that internal service fund, so we can capitalize them and depreciate them over time. We purchased servers, we purchased some big ticket items, and so rather than expensing them all in the one first year, we capitalize them and we'll depreciate them over time, and then we can bill them back and cross, spread that cross, that cost. The intent with an internal service fund is to break even, so what we do is we'll be tracking all of the expenditures, and then we'll create monthly, monthly billings back to the, all of the departments that utilize the IT services. And then the billing in, in the end should equate to the expenditures that have been allocated for that season, or for that, for that budget cycle. At the end of the year, we'll look at the fund, we'll analyze if there's an increase in fund balance, then we'll adjust that rate accordingly. We've established the rates based on the number of computers, so obviously, new, new employees will have new computers, so this will also reflect. But if you look in the budget in the individual departments, you'll, will see the information technology budget is higher than most, 99 if not 100% of the departments. So IT is the new fund, and that is, again, broken down, internal service, and then, as I mentioned, the 210, the Fire AMS fund. We separated that out, obviously, it's a voter-approved millage, it is separate on the L4029 that you approved, and it is a separate tracking mechanism so that it can only be utilized for what the voters approved it for, for Fire EMS activity. So by putting in that separate fund, there's no commingling, it's always there, and it'll sit there. If we don't have, if we come in under budget, it still has to sit there and be utilized for fire. Let's see. Capital improvement projects. So I didn't want to put all of, there's a lot of spreadsheets in there, and in effort of transparency, we trying to, I tried to give you a lot of detail, but not too much detail, so there are more spreadsheets in, in this budget than have been in the past. But identified on page 45 to 48 in the budget is all of the capital projects that were identified from the six-year capital plan that were recommended to go into the budget. So the general fund has $2.7 million. The Streets Capital Project Fund is $7.7 million, and the Capital Projects Fund is $6 million, and those are identified to, one thing we did separate out this year, historically, we had just the Capital Projects Funds and the street, infrastructure, and parks, and stormwater, any, everything was all grouped in the Capital Projects Fund, and it was hard for engineering and accounting, wondering, okay, how much do we have left? We have all this money, what's the fund balance? What are we using it for? And then also Streets has multiple pots of funding, so we have the one mill from the city millage, and then we also have the county millage funds that we have, and those are earmarked for specific activities, you can only use them for, so we turned the county millage fund into the, what you see, the Streets Capital Project Fund. So the Streets Capital, the county millage money and the city one mill dedicated to Streets are now grouped in this new, it's not, it's not new, but it's new, Street Capital Projects Fund. So all street activity is going to be, go through that fund now, separate from the Capital Projects Fund. So the Capital Projects Fund is more geared towards your parks and your infrastructure outside of the streets. We did leave bridges and sidewalks in there, in the capital projects, so, right, Brian? Okay. And so that's why you still have some significant costs in both of those. But again, they're both identified in the budget document, and those are based on our meetings with the department heads and their requests. Those are the big ticket items, so those are usually the ones that we'd like to call out. And the one thing, these are projects, so I think there's, there's a little confusion in terms of, from the general fund, there's a general fund appropriation to those departments, to those funds. So even though in the street capital projects, there's $7 million worth of activity going on, but we're not transferring $7 million worth of money from the general fund. So we're growing that balance as we go, so every, even with the money that we transfer, I think it was the 1.8 from the general fund. If the project isn't done by June 30th, it sits in that capital, or the street project fund and rolls forward. So again, it's another tracking mechanism, so once you say, we want you to do it for this project, it sits there and it has, we've created grant tags for that, so we know exactly what each pot of money is earmarked, and that, we tried to put that in one of the slides in the budget, so happy to answer any questions on that. So parking employee transition, new to this budget. So parking employee transition, it new to this budget, we, the parking employees are in the city budget as opposed to the DDA budget. So in terms, we have, HR is doing their payroll now and they are under unions and benefits from the city. We've had conversations with the DDA and that has worked well. And so we are actually bringing the DDA, we're in negotiations and working through the details of bringing the DDA into the BSNA accounting software as well. So we'll be doing payroll for their four, four employees and doing their AP. And that will be part, built into the DDA service agreement. So instead of them paying an outside entity to do those works, they'll be paying the city and kind of keeping that money in so other funds can be utilized for other act, other items like capital projects or anything else that they can, could potentially use. And also BSNA, one thing, it's BSNA, we have the history. We can, we can look and we can go back with this, Reiman who's doing it now, they're doing a great job, but we don't have access to that history. So one of the things, the trials that we've been trying, just even creating the budget is kind of, okay, what did you use last year? How is, and getting that five-year forecast, it was just very difficult. So we're hopeful that once we get it in BSNA, have it integrated in our process, it'll be a lot smoother for everybody. Water and sewer rates. So you've had many, many meetings with Jana about potential changes to the water sewer and rates, and I'm here to tell you, we have not made any of those changes in this budget. So we are working with, as part of the, the potential loan that we're getting from the state. It is required for a rate study. So we were, we're having conversations. One of the things, we didn't want to have a huge transition for the constituents of the city of Traverse City where if we come in, we make this change, we do the consumption charges are calculated and making these change, their bill's going to change. And then we're, our agreements, our bulk water agreements are set to mature, expire with the townships. So we've kind of took a step back and are reevaluating. We're hoping to jump on board with that bond rate study and at the same time add out, so we can get a third party, when we're, when you're negotiating with the townships, you want to make sure it's not biased. And if we can get that third party to, when we reevaluate the township rate studies, we are hopeful that we'll be able to adjust those rates, which then it's our wholesale cost. If we can increase that rate, then the town, the city constituents rate hopefully won't have to go up as much. So that's, that's the hope and the goal. More to come on that. But for this budget and for this, what we have built in here, we have calculated the rates as we have always done. Brownbridge Trust, this, I just left this slide in from last year. So I think what you just approved is on the agenda. The Brownbridge Trust Fund, there's a ballot initiative out there. So we have included in the budget, the, the grant for the purchase of the property. That has to be, I believe, closed by 12:30. So that will happen in this budget cycle. That's the 528 acres. And the Trust Park Improvement Fund, because the, the ballot language has elapsed, there, it is no longer getting any of the royalties that it had historically. We are not transferring those over because we don't have authority from the constituents. So that doesn't say, that doesn't mean that once it's approved, then we can do a budget adjustment. And at that time, if it's approved by the people, then we'll just do a budget adjustment and then again, start collecting the revenue from there. And so this is a new process with ClearGov. It's, we're hoping to have given you a little bit more information, more transparency, more charts, more graphs. Hopefully, the fund balance, I think, is new. I took a lot of value out of that to see as things were growing. But we welcome any feedback and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Wilson. I just wanted to clarify the, the recommended increases in the contracts and for ACT. The patrol is getting 5 percent.
Okay.
So there was a, an MOU that was approved by the city commission last year to extend the contract. And so the five, they will be receiving 5 percent on July 1, 2025. I didn't catch that, I apologize, but I wanted to make that clear.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Anderson?
Yes. Thank you for addressing the fund balance. I am, I am deeply grateful. And of course, I would like to know how far can we go? I, there's, I've become aware of, and you know, know this process certainly way better than the little that I know about it, but I understand that the, the county has sort of an automated approach to overages in the fund balance that when they reach the statutory maximum, the funds are automatically dispersed into one or two different buckets. Do I have that right or is that, is that a misunderstanding on my part?
So putting on my county treasurer hat, when projecting the, the taxable revenue, it's actually built into the, the revenue that they, they calculate to their capital projects. They, they break their buckets out similar, they have their capital projects and it's based on their amount of interest that they would allocate from the delinquent tax fund. So there's more to it than in terms of the breakout. I, I will say, this budget compared to the county budget is a lot, has a lot more detail.
Good. Thank you.
I, I don't know, being in finance, I was with the county finance for 12 years and then the county treasurer for 12 years. We've, we tend to be very conservative in, in our budgets and our projections. So the county had historically added to their fund balance. But it's, it's, I don't know that there's like a specific, like percentage that they had done outside of that capital.
Okay. Okay. Well, to continue with that thought, if, if we end up with this budget at a 29 percent fund balance, say, we're still nine percentage points or close to 50 percent above the maximum target that the city commission chose a number of years ago. And I, I, I don't feel good about having tax funds from our citizens sitting unused when there are so many obvious needs of the city. And I, I would, I would like to see a conversation among this body as to whether we should push further and faster in, in dispersing the fund balance that is higher than the 20 percent. If, if we don't do that, why are we, why are we collecting funds that we don't use is, is where I come down.
And like I said, so new this year, I mean, this is my second budget cycle. So I learned from the first one. And sitting down and analyzing, that's kind of where that $2.8 million budget adjustment that you approved previously, that's where that came from. I, I had, had taken the spirit of the commission and that you did not want to add fund balance. So, and that's something that I will continue to do going forward. The, so the one thing that concerns me is it's, I think, 3.5 million, which it's not a small dollar, but it's not a big dollar in relation to the unknown and what could be out there. And like I said, with the new positions that we have coming on, we do have some unfunded liability in terms of the pension. So it, if you wanted like an increase that 300,000 to bring that up or if there are other projects, I, I definitely am open to those conversations and, and direction from, from the commission to however you would like me to proceed. But it is something that is actively on my radar and I'm always watching for.
And I am, I am grateful for that. And, and perhaps we can just, the next time that this body is having this conversation, we can include that on the, on the topics. May I ask another or do, do we need to take turns? Someone else have a question?
I have one question, but okay. I, I agree. I think, you know, we've got 20, if we're going to have 29 percent, we do have a little wiggle room, maybe it's not using the whole entire 9 percent, but it's, you know, it's kind of like you've got your money in a savings account and you're making 2 percent on it. Why not use that money to do something that's, you know, actionable? So I only have one, I had a whole, I had a whole bunch of questions.
I answered them.
And you did, but it came in really late, so I'll just look at it later. And thank you very much, all of you for getting, getting me that right in the nick of time there. So my only question is, do you, and maybe you already answered this and I just didn't pick it up, but are you planning to categorize capital improvement projects by those strategic plan pillars like TCLP did?
That is my goal. Yeah. And there's, there's more to come on that in, in terms of how we are going to quantify those pillars into costs and dollars. But yes, my goal in the CIP, and actually that's one thing ClearGov has, any request for a CIP, we have the ability to say, these are, once we've established what they are, these are the pillars, where does it fit in your request?
Okay.
So yeah, that is, again, I want the budget award.
We do have city commission goals as well, you know, so there is some kind of, it must be some way.
Yeah, and that was one of the feedback I had over the weekend from Commissioner Warner is that there were some goals, but my inter, with.
Yeah, those were effective essentially through the 2023 calendar year.
And that's it?
That's it.
Yeah, so they're not, we're not operating under any active goals that I could find. So if you want to offer some, again, happy to.
Well, that's the idea of a strategic plan is it should, it should supersede individual commission goals because it's been comprehensively created by the community, five, every five years to be updated by the community. And so no, we are not operating any under current, any current commission goals. But to your point, you know, when you're in the weeds of the budget document, sometimes you can't see the, the bigger picture and you're like, well, what about, because all of us are waiting for the strategic plan to be finished before we can, we can't comment that these things touch on the strategic plan because it hasn't been approved by the commission. So I do think that we can update some of the narratives to reflect that we're really nearing the finish line, that we've established these pillars, that we wouldn't expect any surprises, as our strategic planner has said, that, you know, we collect data, we layer on that data, we, we add. So I think that we could update the budget narrative to reflect that we anticipate the approval of the strategic plan with these pillars and with action items that have yet to be defined and approved. And then throughout, and, and you know, as Heidi said, then we can start attaching these pillars to these projects and we can refine throughout the year as we make budget amendments, make recommendations throughout the year. We can say this aligns with this pillar and very much the way you saw the presentation from Traverse City, Leyton Power. And I would anticipate moving forward, we would be able to present some of those major projects through those lenses. And I'm, I'm really excited about it. I mean, you can see Heidi's really excited about it. So it is that structure and it is that path forward that we've all been, that the team's been looking for, really that, that guidance that we've been looking for.
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
Thank you. I have a question about grant revenue.
Okay.
And this is something that came up in my conversations with Harry earlier was about how and when do we book grant revenue?
So there's two, there's two parts of grant revenue. There's the budget and then there's the actual. So in the budget activity, we grant, we budget the grant revenue that we think we're going to get, but we don't record the grant revenue unless we've actually utilized it. So for, for financial purposes, when the auditors come in, we're, if, and again, like a CDBG grant, if we've expended the money, if we paid Wade Trim for their activity, the activity that we've paid from January 1st to June 30th, we're going to book a revenue and a receivable. So we record the revenue in actual expenditures, but in terms of the budget activity, if, we don't know what we're going to spend, so we'll budget the, the grant and then only utilize what we actually expend.
Would, would that philosophy also apply to, to grants that haven't been applied for yet, but are intended to be applied for?
So historically, that's one thing that I found when reviewing the, the budget document is we had budgeted for grants and that, well, we think we're going to get grants, but then when it comes down to we're actually getting the grant, we have the department say, well, I didn't build this into my budget. So one thing that we did this year is we did not build a grant, if we didn't know we were getting a grant and have the offsetting expenditure budgeted, we didn't budget the revenue.
Okay. So, so there needed to be a certain level of confidence that, that the grant at least had been applied for and was some confidence that it would be received?
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I look to Brian because he's my grant.
And, and then I had a final question regarding, thank you for the separate Streets Capital Fund. I, I, I found throughout these hundreds of pages, references to street expenditures everywhere. So if I look at the Consolidated Streets Capital Fund, will that capture every bit of, of money that's being spent on city streets regardless of whether they're trunk lines, majors or locals?
No.
No.
So 447 is the capital streets. So those are capital projects that are infrastructure investments. You'll also see the Streets Fund, which is a separate fund. We have the local streets and the major streets. So those are special revenue funds. So if you want to look at what Chris over in the Streets Department, what the cost for their personnel, that's not going to be in the Capital Projects Fund. That's going to be in the Streets Fund. And that correlates to the revenue that we get from the state for the major streets and then the local breakdown.
Okay. What's the most efficient way for me to understand, how much is the city spending on streets during the '25, '26 fiscal year?
You would add the Streets Fund and the Streets Capital Project Fund.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome. No, local and major. So there's two Streets Funds.
Yes. I saw that.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Even all the way down to the end?
I have 80 percent of your questions answered, so you'll be getting those.
Here and none, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
We'll open it up right now for public comment.
Justin Reed. So the DDA, so these, the buildings are all from Pine and Union. You know, there is ego money for $8,000 to go ahead and to do something with those vacant buildings. And they're, they look terrible. You know, we're talking about how the aesthetics of downtown isn't looking too good and everything. So there's $8,000 for money to go ahead and to demolish those buildings. So if you don't use that ego money, then that $80,000 that could have been used for park benches, for, for trees, for things like that, well, that goes away. You know, that, you know, as a taxpayer, because I love using that phrase, as a taxpayer. As a taxpayer, you know, I think it's, for just very responsible for the $8,000 being used for those buildings and that savings of $8,000 could be used for other things to improve downtown.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Ashley Halliday Schmidt and I'm the Director of the Northwest Michigan Coalition to End Homelessness. Hopefully you received this in an email that the coalition sent to city manager Vogel last week, but I wanted to just, as you're going through your budget process, kind of put it top of mind again. In alignment with the city of Traverse City's resolution supporting the Northwest Michigan Coalition's, Coalition to End Homelessness mission to end chronic homelessness by 2028, we respectfully request that the city establish a $1 million line item within its FY '25, '26 budget. This dedicated funding would support the priorities and emerging needs related to permanent supportive housing as identified by the Housing and Homelessness Task Force. This dedicated funding stream would allow the city to be responsive and proactive as the task force finalizes its comprehensive plan to prevent and end homelessness by the end of 2025, to get us a plan and begins implementation of that plan in 2026. This request directly advances the city's stated commitment to expand access to permanent to expand access to permanent supportive housing and the support services. The task force jointly led by the coalition, the City of Traverse City, Grand Traverse County and other stakeholders is a cross-sector initiative that brings together housing providers, healthcare systems, local officials and people with lived experience to create a unified strategy grounded in data, equity and proven solutions. Over the course of twenty-twenty-five, its work groups will identify critical gaps, explore best practices and develop actionable strategies across emergency shelter, safety net services and housing solutions. This flexible and committed funding source that we're asking for tonight would be essential to address gaps as they are prioritized and to accelerate impactful projects that, that advance the task force's mission to end homelessness and most importantly, expand permanent supportive housing within the city. This one million dollar investment is a powerful statement to the city's commitment to long-term systems change and provides a foundation for effective public-private partnerships and leverages additional state and federal resources while ensuring that community-driven solutions can be implemented swiftly and with accountability.
Seeing no, no one else for public comment?